Much interaction on, uh, 4C? No. I mean...
All right, it's five o'clock. It's time for our workshop meeting. Uh, we'll have the call to order. Uh, James, if we'll read the roll.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in terms of our roll call, of course, we'll, uh, as for members present, uh, Mayor Owens, of course, Mayor Proton Selby, Commissioner Borland, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Collins, and Commissioner Burke. Mr. Mayor, all are present accounted for with the Board of Commissioners.
All right. Uh, this is gonna be a little awkward tonight because it's not like I thought it would be, but, uh, you know, I don't hear much out of me and you're like that, I'll keep my mouth shut because I can hardly see anyone out in the audience at all. And, uh, so, James, if you will, I'm gonna leave most of this meeting up to you, so just, I'll step in every day and then if you don't mind. So, go ahead and take off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number two on the agenda, this is the adoption of the agenda. I would require a motion second to vote by the members of the Board of Commissioners.
I move to adopt this agenda.
A second.
All right, been moved, been moved in second, the agenda to be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, agenda's adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, this is item number three on the agenda. During this particular meeting, unlike a regular recessed, uh, meeting, there will actually be a couple of opportunities for, for public, public comment and interaction. So, for the first public comment session, we'll go ahead and ask members of the public, they are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and location so your statements can be recorded. Now, tonight, I think we have a couple of options for folks to make public comment, and we've got the, oh, we've got the microphone over here on this side, on this side of the, of the room. So, if anybody desires to come forward, please state your name, identify yourself and location, and your statements will be recorded. All right, Mr. Mayor, I don't see anybody coming forward, but there's certainly, after the, as part of the comprehensive plan kickoff, there's also a Q and A session during the comprehensive plan kickoff, which we're looking forward to as part of this meeting.
All right.
All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda, item number 4A. These are, this section is for presentations and reports. The first one is presentation of service awards. This one, I'm, I'm really excited. I am so pleased to present employee service awards this evening.
James, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
You're over there by yourself, nobody's around you, why don't you slip your mask down?
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you don't mind, if you, if you prefer to wear it, you go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So, tonight, we have two service awards, and they're from the same department this time. First up will be Mr. Chris Hurdle. Chris recently marked his 10-year anniversary with the town of Manio. Back in 2011, he started with the Public Works Department, and then he moved to the Water and Sewer Department in 2016. Chris holds a Class A commercial driver's license. Prior to his time with the town, Chris worked in the private sector in key roles, including plumbing and electrical work. As a utility maintenance worker, Chris's work is vital to the public infrastructure for the entire town of Manio. We offer him our congratulations on a decade of service to the local community. Chris, congratulations. Next up will be Mr. Josh O'Brien. Josh has served the town of Manio for 15 years. Starting as a utility maintenance worker in 2006, Josh was promoted to plant operator two years later. For the last five years, he has served as department head for the Water and Sewer Department. Josh has achieved the highest level of certification from the state of North Carolina in all three areas: water distribution, wastewater collection, and wastewater treatment plant operation. Josh served in the United States Coast Guard as a public affairs specialist, followed by work in the private sector as a director of sales and marketing. Josh's leadership of the Water and Sewer Department has been exemplary, and we offer him congratulations for this employee service award. Next up on the agenda, this is item number 4B, department head reports. Given the length of this meeting, department heads this report were submitted in written form. So, if members of the public would like to read the written reports for each of the department heads, they're at manionc.gov. And with, with this being the first meeting, first mid-month meeting after the August meeting was, was canceled due to the Virginia Dare holiday, you'll actually have two months worth of department head reports in the agenda packet that many of you have received. Next up on the agenda, item number 4C. This is an update on developer inquiry, and we will have a, we have some information will be going up on the, on the slideshow here. As noted at the last, at the last board meeting, we were to provide an update on the developer inquiry at this meeting tonight. In order to provide appropriate background, we have a few exhibits and information. Since the summer of 2020, there have been numerous meetings, emails, messages, phone calls, and visits to the site. In order to keep this short, however, we will share just a few relevant highlights. In this first slide, we have an area map showing the property in question. It resembles a rectangle with a long side facing Bowser Town Road and a short side on Exeter Street. Bay Tree and Harbor Town are just north of the subject property, and Dare County buildings are located to the east. In the next slide, you can see a survey performed on behalf of the developer prior to purchasing the property. You can see the rectangular shape again, and you may notice existing ditches at the Bay Tree side of the property, plus one running north-south, and additional ditching near the NC DOT right-of-way along Bowser Town Road. The developer talked to the town planner on June 17th, 2020, about a possible minor subdivision, and the next slide shows a lot-line exhibit that was sent to the town, along with a list of questions, on July 23rd, 2020. There were a number of issues raised by the developer, with a follow-up meeting on August 13th, 2020, and written responses to the list of questions submitted that same day. Following consideration by the developer, conflict council became necessary, so the town had to procure legal services. A written zoning determination was provided to the developer on September 18th, 2020. A few months later, on December 7th, 2020, the town received a sketch, please go to the next slide, showing what appeared to be a major subdivision. We had a meeting with the developer and his engineer, Carlos Gomez of Coastal Engineering, on December 9th, 2020. Staff provided feedback on the proposed plan, and we agreed to the ditch relocation that would be designed by the engineer and shown on the site plan. From December through March, we communicated and/or met with the developer and his engineer on issues ranging from sewer infrastructure to stormwater. On June 21st, 2021, we received an email indicating the developer wanted to move forward with the planning of this subdivision, and there was a list of questions to be answered, some of which we'd addressed previously. Town staff met the next day, June 22nd, 2021, and written responses were sent to the developer on June 23rd. The ditch issue was noted in the list of questions, and we confirmed again that we would agree to the ditch relocation, and the engineers should do the design work and show it on the site plan. Things changed on August 4th, 2021. The developer inquired again about the process for relocating the ditch, and the town planner replied that it should be included on the site plan as previously discussed. That response was rejected by the developer as the wrong answer, even though it was consistent with prior guidance. The developer clarified that now he simply wanted to do a ditch relocation, so what permit was required. This was a new and different request, and town staff agreed to research the issues and get back to the developer. Let's go to the next slide showing the ditch in question. We had never heard of a standalone, quote, "ditch relocation" permit, so we had to do some research. We had to determine what the applicable permit might, or might not be, whether it would fall under the regular development permit process, or whether there were special requirements, like the floodplain development permit noted in Section 2615 of the town ordinance, but for which there was no form. We also had to figure out who had jurisdiction, and what was the process, et cetera. On August 10th, 2021, the developer requested a meeting with me and the mayor, which was held that same day. It was a lively discussion with many topics. The developer shared information related to an allegedly simplified process, which I promised follow-up on, and we indicated our expected follow-up by the September 1st or September 15th meeting based on that information. On September 1st, 2021, the developer appeared before you, at the Board of Commissioners, and there were a number of statements made. At that meeting, it was noted that we would need conflict counsel in this instance. I am pleased to present Attorney Lauren Wumble of the Twyford Law Firm, who is providing legal guidance. Ms. Wumble has been admitted to the North Carolina State Bar, as well as U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of North Carolina, and one of her practice areas is local government law. Ms. Wumble will present her findings in this matter.
James, I'm actually gonna come and join you rather than stand here, so I'm not talking to the board outside.
Well, she'll be talking to our back.
That's right. So, let me come up here. I'm used to speaking to my audience in front of me.
Thank you for having me this evening. As James described, I've been involved in this, um, project, um, questions regarding this project since September of last year, actually. Um, my notes range back to September 1st, and I told James that when he contacted me last week about this issue. Um, I'm hopeful that we're gonna be able to give you a, a path forward, um, developer can have a path forward to get this project completed. The first thing I will say is that the, I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna cover, and I know you guys have a lot going on tonight, and you wanna get into your, um, planning. Um, so, one, I'm gonna talk about what I think the current process is for solely a ditch relocation. Um, and two, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what I think the complication is regarding that, and then ultimately, um, I, because I just was brought back in last week, my intent is to prepare a memo, um, to send to the developer with kind of a summary of everything we're gonna talk about tonight. Um, so there's clear documentation about what the process is, what maybe our staff's concerns are gonna be with either process that is chosen, um, and that way, everyone's on the same page. Um, so first, let me talk about what I think the, um, actual process is. Um, I did have the opportunity, yes ma'am? Sure, I thought I was. Is that better? Okay. Um, so I had the opportunity to watch the, um, video of your meeting last, uh, two weeks ago, um, just to make sure I was up to date on the issues and the questions, um, so that hopefully I can answer them all. Um, as you're aware, there is a prohibition against filling a ditch, which I believe prompted the developer's question to the town, which is, "What do I do?" James did a great job kinda covering the history of, uh, the development to where we are today. Um, and prior to your September, your first September meeting, I believe the understanding was that the ditch relocation was gonna occur through the development process. Um, if you're familiar with your zoning ordinance, you will note that there is a substantial amount of, um, stormwater planning, stormwater, um, consideration given through the development process. Um, there are multiple sections, there's Article 16, Article 17, um, where it covers and affects stormwater planning, drainage ditches, all which would affect the relocation of a ditch. Generally, um, relocating a ditch happens through the development process, so it would happen on a site plan with an entire project in place. Um, it is not common that a ditch would be relocated on its own. I do think it can occur, you, um, your ordinance in Section 3, Article 3, talks about, um, building permits and site plans that should be reviewed. One of those, um, site plans to be reviewed covers commercial, um, parking lots, um, the, um, excavation or filling of about 12 inches of ground, um, and then there's another catch-all, it says, "Any site plan not referenced here goes before the planning board." Um, I think that that, there's also, um, authority in Section 112 for fees, right? So, everything the town does generally for planning, there's a fee associated with that. Um, and it references the review of a site plan. Given the review of that and the desire of the, um, developer to only relocate the ditch, then the developer would need to submit a site plan to the planning board for the relocation of the ditch alone, um, for the review. That, that, I believe, is the process within the ordinance. Now, you're not gonna see that process delineated out to say, "How do you relocate a ditch?" What you see is a prohibition to filling a ditch. So, how do we get around the prohibition, right? Well, we get around that by addressing the stormwater needs and, um, following the site plan review process by the planning board. Now, the concerns that I would present in terms of following that process first and alone is that when you submit any sort of, um, development, anything for development approval to the town, it has, you have to have a stormwater impact statement and a stormwater management plan to accompany that. I believe, um, the developer at the last meeting said he's willing to have an engineer prepare the necessary drawings and information and submit that for, for approval, he just need to know the process. Now, from a efficiency and practicality, um, standpoint, I think that, um, there are some concerns regarding that, in that if he were to do that now, when he actually comes and applies for whatever this project's going to be, because at this point, staff has seen a couple different drawings, and without an actual application before them, they are unable to say, "We know this is the project," right? So, without the actual drawings or an application before them, it, we're unable to say, "This stormwater plan addresses this development," right? So, what was gonna happen is, if the ditch is relocated via a site, review of a site plan with a stormwater impact statement and management plan, that process is gonna have to be considered again at the application for the project. I think certainly that's in the developer's discretion if he decides to pursue that. However, I think it's important to note that, um, historically, through the staff's involvement with this project, there were several questions, um, possibilities, um, that the developer could pursue a variance request, um, to actually achieve his development goals. But if the ditch is relocated, then that removes some of those grounds by which a variance might be applicable. Again, that's in the developer's discretion, but those are some concerns that I think need to be noted and brought to the Board's attention and the developer's attention, to say, "If you go this path, you may be cutting off some options that, uh, may be available to actually pursue the full development plan." Um, just look and see my, now, there's other options as well, the, the ordinance covers a phase development, so if the developer opts to, um, wants to move the ditch first, right? So, I, maybe my, my phase one's gonna be to relocate the ditch, and then phase two's gonna be to move into construction, or, you know, construct two units and then four units, and then, um, there's a provision in the ordinance for phase development, such that maybe all this can be encapsulated into one. Um, so, that's kind of a summary, I think, of all of the legal things that I, I believe come into play. I think, um, that in order to relocate the ditch, there needs to be a site plan and stormwater, um, impact statement, and then, um, although I do think that practically, having the whole development before staff, you know, um, I referenced Article 16 in your ordinance, and part of that is, um, there is a required dedication on, for 10 feet from the center of a drainage ditch on either side, um, to the town. And if we relocate the ditch alone, um, there's that provision that is applicable to dedicate 10 feet on, I, from the center point of the ditch to the town. Well, how does that impact the development? We don't know, because all we're dealing with is a ditch. Um, so, there's just a lot of moving parts when you're dealing with development, particularly with stormwater, um, planning, that I think that moving the ditch alone might be an extra hoop to jump through. Um, and I also think that's why you don't see a delineated, specific process in your ordinance for only relocating a ditch, because I would say that generally it occurs through a site plan for a full development. So, that's, uh, base, my summary, again, like I said, I'm gonna do a memo for the developer and provide all that information, um, so that they can review and analyze and decide which path they would like to take. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Board?
Um, I see the developer here. Can he address the Board at, at this time? Would that be appropriate?
Uh, who would rule on that?
Mr. Mayor, as a presiding officer, you'd rule whether you wanted to take any, anything out of order. That's absolutely...
Yeah, I think we ought to hear from all sides, 'cause we need to clear it up, if we can, one way or the other. I have some thoughts, and I want to say something, but I want the Board to get into it too. So, if we will, we'd listen to Malcolm, if it's a grand boy with the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For allowing me to address the Board, I'm quite shocked that I'm, this is on the agenda. At our meeting, um, when I raise these concerns, I asked to participate in this process. I'd like to have worked with Mr., I have heard nothing from the strayers, in the sense I've met with your Board. And this is becoming an adversarial relationship on a simple request to, uh, move a ditch, James. Uh, I, I don't understand why you would not pick up the telephone and say, "These are the things that we need to get worked through." I've never been told that the ditch could be relocated, and I have, and I could bring documents, and I've got a bunch of documents. This is an issue that I think is a critical issue for the, our area, our county. It's something I've read about, and I've heard you all talk about, the critical nature of housing for our town, and I'm trying to do it. And now, there's lawyers involved, there's, uh, and I, I don't understand the difficulty in, in this process. Uh, when we talk about stormwater, there is a stormwater on a state permeate if you disturb more than an acre of land, I think. Okay? I have asked a lot, the, the project has changed, and if you're reading the ordinance, that's what the process is, is to talk with the planning department, talk to the, uh, planners, talk to the staff, and try to come forward with a plan that is workable and doable. A key element to this is a ditch. I met today with state DOT, who, uh, the water transfers to, uh, and, um, and I have hired an engineer, DeLucia, uh, to, who is familiar with working with, um, DOT and issues such as this. It seems to be a simple process with DOT. I have a, I have a letter, James, from Melissa, I'm sure you've seen it, list of concerns. A dedication of 10, or 10 or 20 foot has never been there. There's never been a conversation about a dedication in land. And, and that's an oversight, could be an oversight. Uh, but this is becoming a, an extremely difficult circumstance to deal with when it should be something very simple to do. So, anyway, I'm, I'm really shocked that, that it's an agenda item, and no one has contacted me. No staff person has contacted me, said, "Malcolm, you need to be at this meeting, 'cause we're gonna be discussing your project." So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, and if I could just briefly, um, I wanna just comment just a little bit. I did have an opportunity to watch the video from the last time, and it was announced that you, in open session with everybody there, that this was gonna be on and updated. And also, I would just want to say that just because I am here has not turned us into an adversarial process, when you have counsel...
No, and I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow it to be, so we, we won't...
I just wanna say that I'm here instead of Mr. Gallup.
That's, you're here because Ben has a conflict...
That's right. That's right. So, and I, so I just wanna say that, um, just because, just because I'm here, it's, you know, I don't want this to go from zero to 100. I'm, I'm filling in for Ben, and we, actually, Ben and I tag-team a lot on our boards. Um, and I think that, you know, what, what, you know...
Ms. Wumble, neither do I, so we're, we're in agreement, and I think all three of us in agreement, Malcolm, you and I.
Yes, so I'm gonna, um, and I think it'd be helpful, like I said, I'm gonna do a memo, and that's gonna just, put in writing exactly what the process is, and, and hopefully we can work through that with all the information that way.
Okay. Uh, would the Board like to get into this?
Just like, um, say real quickly, yeah. So, the developer, the, uh...
I don't know.
The developer didn't know the results of your findings until tonight?
Mayor Proton, we're, we're just, we're just hearing the full findings, and, and of course, as our conflict counsel has indicated, she was formulating her response since we contacted her after last meeting, at the direction of the Board to bring it back this day, tonight. And she, as she has formulated her findings, we're hearing them tonight, and she has promised to put them in a memo, be delivered to the developer. And this, we, we certainly appreciate that the Board directed us to be here tonight.
And I will say that James asked me to, if I could bring that with me tonight, and I told him, due to my schedule and kind of fitting this conflict representation in, I was unable to prepare it in advance, but I did speak with, um, he and Melissa yesterday. So, yesterday's really kind of the first time that I was able to get back with staff, due to my schedule.
Well, you know, I don't know why this is so convoluted and so involved and so in-depth. I'm confused. We cannot rent a place in Manio, there is not a place for sale in Manio. I've talked to two or three salespeople, developers. You can't buy or rent a piece of property in Manio. And why we can't let a developer build seven houses at one time, I do not know, over a silly little ditch. I've been out there, looked at the ditch, it's a drain ditch from Bay Tree, and it was built after Bay Tree was built to help drain. People were standing knee-deep water. Uh, James, you're shaking your head, am I wrong?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I couldn't hear that. I'm sorry. I was trying to, I was trying to hear.
I'm a little confused why we're having so much trouble about a ditch.
Well, you know, unfortunately, and we...
I know about the stormwater runoff like you're talking about.
Yep, and we're, as, as practical as we want to be, and, and I can say that since, with my involvement, I, I think that staff has been attempting to get this project going, but there's not been an application, right? So, we have not, there's not been an application.
You've answered me. Then he needs an application, right?
He needs, uh, my recommendation would be that the developer needs to apply for his pro, full project. Now, he doesn't have to, he can certainly apply just to relocate the ditch. Um, but if he, I think the most practical way to expedite the process, to get this, this development going, is to apply for the project in its entirety. The relocation of the ditch, the construction of whatever, be it a minor subdivision or a major subdivision, or seven, or 14, I think, or 16 units, I think I heard from the meeting last time, whatever that project's going to be, i- if you do it in one application, then it actually, um, enables staff to say, "Hey, you know, you're, this development's not gonna comply with this, but maybe there's a variance we can pursue." Or, "It's not gonna, um, work with that, but let's do this." Or, "We know that this stormwater, this location of the ditch and this piping," I know there was discussion about, um, piping this ditch underwater, under, underground, excuse me. And so, in order to really assess whether that is practical, we should have the whole project. But that's at the developer's discretion.
I think, I could be totally wrong, 'cause I've only been here a few years. The ditch was allowed to be built, I mean dug, and I think Manio dug the ditch, and this, some of these Board members can correct me, I don't know. But the ditch has not been there forever. I think the ditch was there after development was built. And that's Bay Tree, 'cause that ditch drains from the apartments to the highway, or supposed to, and that's what Malcolm was talking, I have not discussed Malcolm's problems or anything. But the ditch drains to the main drain, to the road, to, to stay highway, Bowser Town, is where it drains to, and it's supposed to empty, and it does not even empty there, because the drains are like this, if you go out there and look at it, I've been out and looked at it. The water can't drain. So, I, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused why this has been going on for a solid year, and the town has not done anything about it, and possibly the developer, I think, I've seen a lot of his plans pass back and forth, but I don't know what, what the problem is except stormwater runoff.
So, I, I think that, you know, really, the town is hamstrung until there's an application to move through the process.
Am I correct in saying the town has never addressed, or, or not addressed, the town has never had this problem before?
Which prob, the ditch? Relocation of a ditch alone?
The ditch.
I think that there's probably been plenty of ditches or drainage ways which have been relocated, relocated through development, but they have not been relocated in this fashion, only as the ditch. It's been relocated through that way.
Ms. Wumble, I am old, and I will tell you this, there've been so many ditches closed up in Manio, it's unbelievable. That's why Manio does not drain like it used to, because previously, people were allowed to close up the ditches. I know one main ditch is closed up. I know one main ditch is closed up, Melissa knows about it too. It goes from out there somewhere to the side. And I'm not arguing with you now, please understand, I'm really on your side, but I'm trying to see how we can clear all this up to get something resolved so we can move on.
I agree, and I will say, in terms of the ditch, I'm going to just touch on a few things. So the ditch was in place at the time that Mr. Fearing purchased the property. So what his deed, which purchases the property, references this plat. North Carolina law says that when you purchase a piece of property, you assume basically the hydrology of that parcel, right? So at the time that Mr. Fearing purchased this property with those drainage ditches on the plat, they're there, and the runoff from the other development, he purchased that property with all that involved. Which means if he's going to change the ditches, he has to address how water flows and exits his property accordingly. I do not disagree, I think that historically, in all local government areas, that there were periods of time where people did what they wanted, when they wanted, and what worked, and what was, "You know what, we want this to happen, so we're just going to not really worry about that section of the ordinance, and we're going to look the other way, and let's keep on moving as quickly as possible." Unfortunately, we are in a place now where the ordinance is cleared. I will say, the North Carolina general statutes also prohibit you from filling ditches. So we are just, we're really hamstrung on two levels, but there is a path out. And the path out is doing a site plan and relocating the ditch. You've got to go before the planning board, and you can do that. I do think there's a more efficient way, but that's not my decision to make, so.
I've said this each and every time that I've addressed this issue with staff and with town. To architects, engineers, surveyors are expensive, but that's necessary in development. Tonight's the first night that I've heard that the town is willing to relocate the ditch, okay? So what, before I can develop a plan, I've got to deal with the ditch. From there, once I know what we can do with the ditch, then we can have a subdivided plan and have all the infrastructure, water, sewage, and stuff like that, the stormwater. But until I know what I can do with that ditch, those two ditches, I'm stopped. And I have communicated that, and communicated that, and communicated that. And that's the God's honest truth. And I'm just simply trying to get an answer. This is what we can do, this is what we can agree. If the engineer, and I understand the hydrology, I have experience in that from another board, and I've expressed to you my desire to look after the adjoining neighborhood so it doesn't back up and affect them. That's our family's whole desire, is to work with our neighborhood. But I cannot develop a plan, submit a plan, until I know what I can do with that ditch. Because it'd be a total waste of our time and money.
But this is the problem, Malcolm, with that, is that if you submit a plan now for a ditch and say, "Okay, the town's approved the ditch to move here," and the town approves that, and then you come back with a second application for a development, the town has to then reevaluate how your development impacts the new location of the drain or the piping that you put in place. So, you know, you want the town to approve your location of the ditch, but that's not going to bind us to agreeing that that's the appropriate drainage or stormwater plan for the next development.
I think it, you know, not to cut you off, but I'm glad you spoke up because I don't want to, you know, make assumptions on, you know, where you're at in your process on development. But, yeah, I mean, I get, it's the least efficient way, but, you know, from Malcolm's perspective, and that's why there's fees on permits, right, because we're having to review them. And so you're going to have to do two applica -- one, to move the ditch, but you don't have to pay all the engineering fees. And then that is going to possibly affect what is approved or what else you have to do on the long term. So it is, like you said, the least efficient way, but it seems like that would be the process. Either of those two options are already in place. And, you know, I don't think we need to, you know, have an adversarial relationship here. I think, you know, just kind of loop back to that, I think James left last meeting with an action item to come back to this meeting with a process. I hear it would've been nice to say, "Hey, we do have that answer, so make sure you're there." But we're on TV too, so, you know, that helps. So it sounds like we don't have to have any action, you've just come and clarified what the process is. And now, you can either submit the full package, which sounds like, you know, I mean, if I was doing it, I probably wouldn't want to do it, but, or you can do just for the ditch, knowing that that is going to impact, it's going to have to be reviewed as part of the whole thing later. That sounded my understanding of the, you know, thousand-foot view of it, is that accurate?
That's accurate, there's no board action required tonight. I'm going to do a memo, and I'm sure that memo will get distributed to you all as well.
Well, I'm learning. And it's the first time we've really discussed in depth that we're getting somewhere, I think. And I think we're getting somewhere. Is any other board members, I can't see anybody, so just speak up when you want to.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Womble.
Yes, sir.
What would be, as our attorney or representing the attorney tonight, what would be your opinion how we could work a site for all parties concerned, as a lawyer?
As a lawyer, so I think that at this point, one, I think it's helpful that I'm kind of involved now, right? So I'm kind of, there's a contact person. So if Mr. Fearing wants to contact me, or maybe his engineer wants to contact me about questions, you know, I can help and be at work alongside staff to say, "This is the process, let's follow this process, let's get this, we're going to, this is the process he's chosen, this is what we're going to do." So I think that that's helpful.
Then he should help me out here, now he should go, because he's got to go to the planning board before it comes to us in its finality, is that right?
So if he's just going to relocate the ditch, that will be just a site plan review to the planning board. So he would have to just go to the planning board with his site plan and the stormwater study to relocate the ditch.
And then, upon approval or disapproval, let's put it that way, it would come to us anyhow.
No, the ditch relocation alone would not come to you, but what will come to you is a --
I didn't know that.
So that property is owned B2, which means that the development would require a major subdivision, would require it come before the board, but a development in that fashion would also require a conditional use permit, which will now, because of the new changes, will be a special use permit. But that will be required to come to before your board for a review, and also the planning board. So at some point, whenever the ultimate project is applied for, it will eventually get to you. But not the ditch alone, unless the ditch is included in the whole project.
Is there anything else from the board?
Yeah, I mean, real quick, it's rare we give you a microphone with no time limit here, Malcolm. So you've asked for a process, and I feel like we've got a process. Do you have anything else? I mean, I know it's ongoing, I think, are you satisfied here?
Yeah, well, I'm about to do that. All right, we're about to do that. I'm going to instruct the manager and the planner to work with Malcolm to, I'm not going to say approve or disapprove, but let's get this thing settled and get it over with, one way or the other. We can't keep coming back here, and of course, I know the planning board don't want it either, but something can happen. But they got to have some sense of instruction, it won't be from this board, it'll be from the town manager and consulting with his staff, and go from there. So, James, I think you've got your marching orders, let's work it out one way or the other.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and our conflict council will provide that memo as promised. It will go to the developer, and we will look forward to an application, whichever direction that goes forward.
Thank you, Ms. Womble, for an excellent job.
Thank you, and I'll get that out to you guys next week, just so everybody knows, it'll be next week.
And any additional info that you think would be important to the board, if you'll let us know too?
I sure will, yep. And also, if Mr. Fearing has any follow-up questions or a question about the memo, once he receives it, I'll be happy to talk with him, and hopefully, we can get a plan and move forward. I know that the town and staff wants to see this project succeed, so.
I just want it off this table.
I understand, well, I'm going to try to help make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you guys have a good evening.
Okay, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, we're going to move into a phase in which the comprehensive, oh, sorry.
Do we get off the table, let them come up here, or what happens?
Yes, sir. So next up, the planning board will be joining the board of commissioners up here on the dais. What they will do, they will actually call themselves, simply call themselves to order, and as soon as they gavel themselves in, then we'll move right into the comprehensive plan kickoff session. And if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, we'll invite the planning and zoning board to the dais.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
There's a little staff on the corner down there.
I think this is going to be the easiest planning board meeting we've ever run. So basically, all I have to do is call this meeting to order, and this is the special meeting of September 15th, 2021. And then I'm turning this over to James.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, this is item six. Item six is a comprehensive plan kickoff session. Six A will actually be a comprehensive plan presentation, and following that will be some questions and answers, or Q and A. Now, we've got a wonderful team with us from Stewart, Inc., and I will actually defer to our colleague to introduce the entire team. But we'll start out with Jay McLeod, who is over from Stewart, Inc., and is a member of the leadership team there. Jay, we'll go ahead and bring you up either to the lectern or to the microphone.
How about the microphone so everybody can hear you?
Thank you for the introduction. Thank you for having us here tonight, it's great to be here, and really looking forward to working with the town on their comprehensive plan update. My name is Jay McLeod, and I'm with Stewart. As James indicated, that's a multidisciplinary firm based in Raleigh. We also have offices in Charlotte, Columbia, and Wilmington, among other places. We primarily provide construction and planning-related services, and so that includes civil engineering, structural engineering, transportation, engineering, and planning. There's geotechnical construction testing services, surveying. There's our municipal planning group, and I have some team members here with me tonight. And in addition, we also have a kind of a niche group that does sports and events planning, so they help out with things like football tournaments and so forth. So that's kind of introduction to Stewart in general, but we also, like I said, our municipal planning group was founded probably two or three years ago now. We deal primarily with small to mid-sized local governments across the state. We help them with land use planning, comprehensive plan updates, sometimes ordinance and unified development ordinance updates, which are land development regulations. We also do some local government training and education about the processes involved in land development regulation. So there are about seven of us, I believe there's six or seven of us, but we work closely sometimes with the landscape architecture group and the civil engineering group as needed to augment our capacity as well. So that's Stewart, and if you'll switch to the next one, I'll introduce our municipal planning group. So with me tonight is Chad Sari, who's at the end of that row there. He's a practice area leader for our group. Chad has a couple decades of local government planning experience, as well as some private sector experience. And so he brings kind of that perspective, as well as he's worn the hat of elected official, and so he also brings kind of an understanding of that side of the table to the plan development process. Andrea Radford is with me also. Andrea has a background in grant writing, historic preservation, and also GIS and GIS analysis. And so she does a lot of work with that, and she's also been involved in a couple KAMA land use plans with me in terms of comprehensive plan development. I have a background originally in ecology, but then moved into urban regional planning. A lot of GIS work in my history, suitability analysis and so forth. I also have worked with regional planning councils in Florida on long-range regional plans. I have local government experience, so I've done things like Melissa does, processing development applications and rezoning, site plans, special use permits. I've even done some sign runs and sign permits and fence permits, I kind of got to do it all. And then I got to move back to Stewart and do long-range planning, which is really where my heart is, and especially long-range plans for the coastal communities that deal with a range of issues that I find challenging and interesting to tackle. Up on the top left is Chiquisha Cologne, she's joined us recently. She has a background in pedestrian and transportation planning, as well as document curation and generation. And so she really helps us a lot with the graphics and the compiling of documents, as well as providing input on those other subject areas. Allison Evans has previously worked with the Urban Design Center at Raleigh, has a background in bicycle and pedestrian planning as well, as just general urban planning and urban space kind of design guideline type of planning. And then on the bottom right is a landscape architect who is part-time with our group, but also part-time with the landscape architecture group, Stephen Faber. And he helps us whenever it comes down to looking at site plans, preliminary site plan development, and small area planning, as well as graphics and rendering. And one person who's not up there that I should have oversight mine is Jake Petrowski. He and I go way back, and he's been doing land use planning for a long time across the state. He has a pretty in-depth background in GIS as well, and in fact, he used to work for Esri, which is the company that basically creates one of the major mapping softwares out of their Charlotte office, and now he's in the Raleigh office with us. Next slide, please. So when Stewart's municipal planning group comes to a town or a county, and we get to work with them on a comprehensive plan update, we kind of view it as a partnership. So it's kind of a, and the major players, you know, obviously, we as a consultant are helping facilitate the plan update process by taking public input and getting to know the community and bouncing our ideas off of the local government staff and the community and the leadership committee, planning board, board of commissioners, et cetera, and making sure that whatever recommendations we think we're hearing are getting tempered by the public's perspective and by the locals' community's perspective. So a big part of that process is the establishment of a leadership committee. So this would be a group of people that we will work with closely during the plan development process. They're kind of the working group, but I know that name's been taken already in Manio. So they'll be working closely with us to review and vet documents and chapters and make sure that they're properly framed and enjoy the benefit of local perspective and understanding before they're released for a more broad review. And they'll be involved with us throughout the whole project. So their role is to meet regularly with us as the consultant, review plan documents, contribute their perspective and ideas and opinions, help shape and kind of hammer recommendations into the right spot, and also to, you know, get involved in being a masterful plan. Planning doesn't necessarily stop when we leave town and then start back up when we get back. It's an ongoing community conversation, and we hope that our leadership committee is out there talking to people about what they think about the future and what it should be, and then bringing those ideas back to us to make sure that we are on point and pointing in the right direction as the community is pointing. Next is a slide showing the project schedule. This is really the big kickoff. Previous to this, we've only really discussed things like contract scheduling, et cetera. But you'll see on there multiple touchpoints with the public, those are those green hexagons, I guess? Green hexagons, multiple touchpoints with the general public, kind of in a forum like we have this evening. Those triangles represent touchpoints with the leadership committee. In between all those dots, we'll be having regular communication and coordination calls with town staff. And then you'll see an S in there for a big public survey that we hope to roll out at the end of this month, and I'll talk a little bit more about that soon. So while we have scheduled a sufficient number of public engagement points and make sure that we're touching back regularly with the community, we also do have a deadline to make sure that we have something in place before July 1st. And that is because the state recently passed legislation a year or two ago called Chapter 160D, which was a comprehensive update to the state's planning and zoning-enabling legislation. legislation. And that mandated that any community that wants to enforce zoning, which we have zoning here, needed to have a reasonably updated, reasonably current land use plan. And so that's one of the reasons that we want to make sure that we are meeting that deadline and make sure that the town has everything in place that it needs to continue enacting zoning according to an updated land use plan. Current land use plan is probably a little more than a decade old, and so we want to make sure things have changed in the last 10, 15 years, want to make sure we touch back with the community, staff, with leadership, and make sure that we have a plan that's current and implements the community's vision for its future. Next slide, please. So for those of you that don't do comprehensive plan updates for a living, let me just describe kind of generally what that entails. So a comprehensive plan hopefully helps people come together and talk about issues in their community, what their concerns are, and what they'd like to see differently, things that have worked, things that maybe could have been done better. It helps leadership and elected officials prioritize items for implementation, like when they want to accomplish things, they know that the community has this on their mind, and they'd like to see something happen, and then they can, you know, designate resources towards achieving those goals. The future land use map component will help guide rezoning and land use development decisions as one of the data points that the planning board and the commissioners consider in their deliberations. I already mentioned the requirement from Chapter 160D, but ultimately, it's a community conversation about shared goals and vision and where we want to move our community towards. And the reality is that we get a lot further and get a lot more done if we know where we're headed and we're all going in the same direction. And that's really what we hope to get out of this. You'll be, I'm sure you'll all be interested to hear the perspectives of your neighbors and friends, and then hopefully we'll open up a discussion that will lead to a productive land use plan. So in the next slide, you'll see kind of the general components of a land use plan. It looks like one of my slides got a little messed up, but that's all right. Generally speaking, a land use plan is composed of certain elements. We'll talk about land use, the environment, parks and open space, utilities and infrastructure, where those investments might be, and all those in the name of implementing the community vision. So Manio happens to be one of the communities in the, one of the 20 coastal counties that's regulated by the Coastal Area Management Act. So the Coastal Area Management Act is a statewide act that deals with protecting shared coastal resources. Ultimately, it kind of trickled down from the federal government back in 1975 or so, and it basically is kind of one of the other things that we want to make sure that this comprehensive plan does. So the Coastal Area Management Act kind of regulates salty areas, right, where the saltwater touches the land. So coastal wetlands and marshes, nearshore habitat, you know, dunes and beach areas and so forth. So as part of this land use plan update, this comprehensive plan update, we'll also be making sure that we're providing the information that the state needs in order to ensure that the Coastal Area Management Act goals are met, and this plan can then be reviewed and certified by the Coastal Resources Commission as a KAMA plan, which then the local government, the town staff, will use when they're issuing local, small-scale KAMA permits and big-scale KAMA permits. So for things like docks, bulkheads, seawalls, boat ramps, et cetera, all those access points and stuff are needed in order to make sure, we need a plan, the state needs a plan to bounce those review approvals off of. Next slide, please. So aside from the creation, the background information involved in a KAMA plan and the process that we go through to create it, which is very similar to a traditional comprehensive plan update, we'll be touching on these five land use management topics, which are required to be addressed by the state. That's public access to public trust waters, which are basically navigable waterways. Land use compatibility, making sure that the development we have in the KAMA-regulated areas, the salt marshes and stuff, is compatible with the environmental quality that we're looking to achieve. And then infrastructure carrying capacity, natural hazards, and then water quality. And so there's a board out in the hallway, we can talk more about this when we're out there, if you want to learn more about that particular part of this plan. But ultimately, these will just get rolled into the regular kind of comprehensive plan update process. You don't have to be specifically knowledgeable in any one of these. You just need to bring your concerns, thoughts, ideas, and perspectives, and we'll do the rest, we'll do the work. So the plan development process typically starts out with us reviewing existing plans and documents. We don't start from scratch, we want to make sure that we're building on the efforts that have already been made. Nothing happens in a vacuum. So we start out with review of that material and generating, using existing data to basically build a picture of the conditions in and around the town. Then we get to know the community, and that kind of started today. We came, the Stewart team was here, we met with town staff this morning, basically all the department heads, and then we talked through their challenges, opportunities, recent successes, recent areas where there could be room for improvement. They're helping us to get to know the town and the issues that the town's facing. Then we had a community tour, so we drove around and saw boots on the ground, the places that were the hotspots that needed attention, the places that were successes. We've got some great character images. Obviously, this town is like super photogenic, so love having photos of this town. I actually had some from before when I just passed by once, so I'll just add that to my collection. And then tonight is introduction to the leadership and getting to know the community. And then right after this, we want to make sure that we touch base with anyone who's here and wants to share their perspective out in the hallway, and we've got some things that we can kind of help focus discussion to help us get to know more about what's concerning to you. After that, we'll be looking more broadly at a discussion of community goals, vision, and values, and we want to kind of grab that information. It'll primarily be assembled through an online survey, and I'll talk more about that in a second, but also through the information we hear tonight, we start to build this picture. There are going to be public meetings, plan drafting, public review and comment, so that's kind of the plan rollout, and then where we kind of hammer it a little bit more. And then it'll go to public adoption hearings. And so just like any rezoning, any, any rezoning, any update to the ordinance amendment, any adoption of any plan that comes before the town, that the town as a local government is expected to review and adopt, it goes to the planning board first in a public hearing for review and recommendation, and then it goes to the Board of Commissioners to review that recommendation, review the document, review the public comments that have been gathered, and then make a decision on whether to adopt or not. And then following that process, it'll go to the state for that KAMA review, as I mentioned before. So if you go to the next slide, just want to point out that public engagement is very important. It takes many forms. At Stewart, we want to make sure that people in the community are able to be involved, as involved in the comp plan update as they want to be. And that's our goal, is to make sure that people can be heard. So it starts with the steering committee or the leadership committee. There are the kind of interviews we talked about with staff and with people, you know, staff departments and local subject area experts. Public meetings, like the one we're having right after this and in the near future. Community survey, which will be distributed throughout and made awareness throughout the community. And then, of course, there is a project website, and I'll show you that address at the end. It's already been started. And as the plan development takes place, information will continue to be added to that website, and so people can check in, they can review what's happened if they missed it, and they can then kind of, you know, phone a planner, call up the town planner, or send an email to make sure that they're keeping in touch, or, you know, touch base with one of the leadership committee or one of the planning board members as they kind of help shape the plan. So to talk really briefly about what goes into that survey, we're going to be kind of asking questions about vision, community vision and values, you know, what's important to the members of the community. We want to kind of hopefully get that into a shape that then provides goals that we can then frame all the plan recommendations toward achieving, right? So ultimately, at the end of this, we want to have a plan document with background information, goals that we want to achieve as a community, and then the steps that we can take to achieve those goals and how we can get to there. And every recommendation, policy recommendation, implementation step that we have in that plan, we want to point back to one of those goals and say, this is why we're doing this thing, because the community said they wanted to achieve this goal. So currently, we see that, that survey running from September through October, probably, and we'll, we're going to be working with staff to make sure we update the project schedule on the website and get that information out as fast as possible. There will be also, like I said, a public meeting coming up soon. Tentatively, I think that we have that for October 27th, if I'm not mistaken. October 27th, it's on the next slide. That'll be kind of like what you see out here, but it'll be a little bit further developed, and we'll have some of the same information, but also some new information. But basically, this is just to, we're here to listen. We're here to learn and listen. That's the first part of this phase of this project, is the consultant team learning and listening and making sure we understand what's important to you all. On the next slide, you'll see kind of an outline of what we have tonight. We'd like you to tell us about your neighborhood. We'd like you to share your vision for Manio and what's important to you. We have a few preliminary maps out there, mostly just so that we can kind of gather around a map and point and talk. We want to hear what you're concerned about or what you're excited about, and make sure we kind of capture that vision. And so before I pause to make sure that I hear anything that you all have to say in your official capacity, I would like to just close by pointing to the closing slide, which has the project website, as well as our contact point in the town, town planner, Melissa Dickerson, who is going to be our contact point locally for anything comprehensive plan related, and she's going to be, we're going to be working closely with her to make sure everything's on point and collected and information transferred. But thank you very much for your time tonight. It's been wonderful being here, and I'm looking forward to hearing from what you have to say. Thank you.
All right. Bye, so out.
I just have one question.
No, it's your meeting.
Oh, yes. Actually, it's your meeting. You're the mayor. My one question is, in terms of your, your survey, is it, is it a survey that you actually call people and inquire? Is it a phone survey?
Not a phone survey. It'll be an online survey, but also there will be hard copies available locally, so those can be brought around to people and then entered later. We want to make sure that we get the word out so people can go take it. Our general approach to surveys is we want, we want to make sure we get actionable information from them. We want to make sure that it's easy. I'm not talking about an hour and a half-long survey, you know? We're talking about something that gets to the point, gets people's input, and is actionable. So when we develop that, we haven't put it together yet, but there'll be some demographic and information about the person who's taking the survey, and then there'll be kind of questions about values and direction, and then possibly a few other items that we have yet to be determined with staff. Are you concerned that we won't, I mean, surveying is kind of interesting now in the age of cell phones, right? It used to be you could look in the phone book and do that, but not so much anymore.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we get, capture as many perspectives from our residents as possible.
Absolutely.
So I have always appreciated more, a real proactive approach. So I was just wondering how we were going to do that.
Absolutely. And we've, we've been already talking some with staff about how to best get the word out, and so we've been looking at multiple avenues for that.
I have a question of him, Mr. McLeod, Ms. Worxton. Is it all right if I go ahead and ask him?
Yes, you may.
Get him jammed.
Yes, you may ask the question.
I have asked your permission.
You've got my permission.
Mr. McLeod, it is McLeod.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question, probably hypothetical. Will the 160D statutes conflict with KAMA plans as provided by the legislature? Are they separate, going to be together, or what?
There will be no conflict. The plan that we're going to work to develop with the town will be, will meet the needs of both legislations.
Well, you probably know why I ask it, because this KAMA and this 160D is going to conflict somewhere.
Well, you're not wrong. There's probably, I won't get into the nitty-gritty, but there are some places where I think there's still some uncertainty at the state level when people go to make certain decisions but, and update certain components, but in this case, we're going to be going through the full process for both.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right, Madam Chair. So if it's all right, if I were to Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead and talk a little bit about the next steps tonight. So in the agenda, we had on the agenda item 6B. That was comprehensive plan Q and A, and we understood there's an opportunity for members of the audience to ask questions about the process, about the comp plan, about the consultant team. And then that will be followed up with the opportunity out in the, out in the lobby here to actually look at some plans and start giving that feedback and sharing what you, about your neighborhood, about the vision for Manio. So there will be, the Stewart team will be out in the lobby after, as soon as this adjourns, but in the meantime, there is an opportunity for questions and answers, correct?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So to the, to the board's agenda, this is, this is 6B, comprehensive plan Q and A, and it's an opportunity for folks to come to the microphone, ask their question, or have the microphone taken to them. We have a colleague here, a program manager, able to hand out the microphone if somebody desires to ask questions now about the process in a large group before going out into the more intimate setting of the lobby.
Please feel free to step up to the microphone. This is a very friendly group, very informal. Give your names, please.
Dave Stimple. I live at 815 Lindsay Lane in Manio. Prior to you coming here about a year ago or so, the town did form a comprehensive group of input from citizens, and we worked on it for, God, a year, year and a half. Do you have any of that information, and if so, will you be looking at that? Because it answers a lot of the questions you're already bringing up. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Thank you.
So for those that didn't hear, the town has already transferred all that information, and we've been reviewing it. So absolutely, it was great to see all the work that has been done previously. It's wonderful.
Is there anyone else who has a question for Stewart team? You'd rather wait and talk to them one-on-one in the lobby, which is perfectly all right. No one else? Okay. Then I would like to adjourn this meeting, and we can go out into the lobby and resume our conversation, so.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motioner, is there a seconder?
No seconder.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No nays. It, it looks like this motion passes. We are adjourned.
All right. I recommend I declare that the town Board of Commissioners is backed to order, and James, kickoff.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight on the agenda, this is mayor and commissioner comments.
I have no comments tonight. I'd like to thank Mr. McLeod and his group coming and being a part of us, and I'm sure they'll do a good job. Also would like to thank the festival park for allowing us to meet over here tonight as we did. It worked out a little better than I thought it would, quite frankly. So that's commissioner comments, Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate everybody coming out, because obviously, we've got a huge impact, and hopefully we can get more people, even more eyeballing that October 27th meeting, and of course, others. This is going to help drive a lot of things, the plan, steering for us and the planning board and our community. So great, it's probably true for all on the coast, but, you know, ours is the best. But, you know, we, people live here, it's a little bit different than the, than the beach, and so we impact this great community, but also so many people that come to visit, so that the impact that this planning process is going to have is going to be really widespread, so. Appreciate it. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Jason. Betty?
I have nothing.
Christine?
No, sir.
No? Darrell?
Well, I hope this comprehensive plan addresses stormwater runoff and flooding. And I think this is a good start for us tonight. That's it.
Richie?
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. And now I understand that we're going to go out and view the, there's things out in the lobby or something.
Yes, sir.
I hadn't, I don't, I don't know what's going on to the belly end of it. I don't know what's going on to Barry and Donna. I'm going to leave you. Go ahead, James. Make some remarks toward it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As soon as the board goes to its adjournment, the next item on the agenda, number nine, then there's the opportunity for both the board, the planning board, as well as the wonderful members of the community have shown up here tonight to actually visit with the consultant team, look at some of the maps, and start providing some of their feedback here on the very first, well, the very first time they're here in public. So... But that would be an opportunity after the adjournment to do so.
Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn? What's the date?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to double-check that first...
Caught you off-guard, didn't I?
Yes, sir. That first Wednesday in October. Let me fill that up, sir. That'd be October 6th and at 6:30. Thank you.
October the 3rd?
October the 6th at 6:30.
Can we have a motion to adjourn till October 3rd at 6:30?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn until October 6th at 6:30.
I'll second it.
The motion is seconded that we adjourn till October meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes ayes, we stand adjourned.